Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our normally scheduled Boris Selectman's meeting tonight, Thursday, November 4th, 2021. I hereby call our meeting to order and ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next would be, is there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Yes. Given what happened last week, or yesterday, the day before, in the defeat of the RAM referendum, I'd like to revisit the Public Works to ask specific questions because I think it's going to be defeated. Given the overwhelming no vote that came for basically what was a $1.8 million referendum for Hebron, I don't see the May vote passing. And I'd like to discuss or see what the proponents think they're going to be doing to mitigate the Department of Public Works building situation. I'm making a motion, I'll make a motion to add the DPW to our old business.
You know what, I'll go along with it. Only because I think it, people need to get it clarified, what the other steps that need to be done before it goes to the voters. You know, I don't want to take a lot of time on it because there's still a lot of moving parts that need to be done before it even gets to the voters. But sure, we can have a quick, hopefully, quick discussion on it.
Well, point of clarification then, I believe we voted to put it on the May referendum, is that not true?
Yes, I agree with John. We put it on next May, yeah.
True, but there still are many other steps that need to get verified. Andy, you want to please step in?
Yeah, it's fine discussing it. I would advise all the board members to do that. The proposal that was, it said May, we put that out there not knowing, or an appropriate date, so we left it open. So until we get all the work done, and I'll give an update on that. I'm not sure that that's the official date for the vote, but we left it open. We did say May, the May referendum, or a further date.
Did we? I thought we said it was for the, with the budget in May.
We're going to shoot for that, but if we're not ready, we're not ready. We're going to have everything completed and financial bonding and everything in place. So we're hoping to have that done, John, but I'm not sure that that's going to happen.
Okay, so I guess the vote is to put it on the agenda.
Okay. Gail?
I'm okay with putting it on the agenda as long as we put a time limit on it because there are too many pieces we don't have an answer to and we just end up going back and forth between us, saying the same thing in different words. So I don't think, until there is a solid piece of information coming from Andy regarding this, I don't see what we're going to accomplish.
Is that a yes?
That's a yes, as long as it's time limited, John.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that. I think one of the things that I like to see, since we have an extended period of time before this, we sort of get a final opinion as to whether or not it can go on in May is, I think one of the gaps that we can continue to work on closing in general, and I think the RAM project was evident of that, is how do we get the right information out, unbiased information out, to allow the public to best understand what they're considering? So again, the focus on getting unbiased information out there, trying to, you know, lead them in a direction, but give them information for the well-educated and whatever the decision is that they make, is what they make. But, so I'm interested in how we can work towards that, more so than just sort of whether or not we should do it because we're beyond that. But I'm interested in having it be out there so we can continue to educate ourselves and make sure we can then educate the public as well, as we build toward later this, into next year. So I'm for it. That's a yes for me.
Okay, and Mark? Is Mark on?
He was here.
Since I don't have Jessica helping me with technology, I missed the first part of this discussion. What are we voting on?
To put the DPW on the old business, discuss the implications of the RAM vote. And we're being told that there's additional steps, so I think that's kind of interesting. We should be aware of that.
So, the vote is whether or not we discuss it, and at this point, it's four in favor.
I'm going to go along with the group, five in favor.
Okay. Okay. Any other changes to the agenda or additions? And that'll go under, I I guess, I guess possibly old business? That's been on for whatever? Okay, our next section will be, yes, Andy? You're on mute. You're on mute.
No wonder you didn't hear me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think at your request, I think you wanted to discuss that letter that was sent in
Yes.
to the Selectment regarding the mask wearing. So I just remind you, if you want to add that, or ask your colleague.
Well, I want to add it under correspondence. And then what it is, is I received a letter from one of our constituents to again wanting to discuss the mask rules that we have here in town. And one of my questions, and as I say, short and sweet, is at what point do we feel we can reduce or eliminate that mandate that we have?
Okay, so if you want to do it under correspondence, that's your preview. I thought you had asked me to add that to the agenda.
Well, what's the feeling on the body? I'm trying to get information, as I say, also from Chatham Health and from other resources to see what other towns are doing.
I sent that out to you.
And again, I don't have internet.
Okay, we can bring it up onto the screen, but prior in the week, I don't know if any of the other boards of Selectment members got it, but I sent the letter that was sent to you along with the response from the Director of Health from Chatham Health District.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Peter, it's just common on this, if I may. I think really the issue is, are, you know, what advice do we take? Rather than us really come up with our opinions on it, it's almost like if we decide we're going to take the advice of the Chatham Health Director, then it allows for, as an example, and maybe why we should discuss it, it allows for consistency so we can, when a constituent does write in, we can say we're adhering to this practice. And we recognize that people may agree or disagree with it. There's consistency with how we respond to an ever sort of evolving issue with the sensitivity obviously surrounding it, as opposed to having it sort of linger as a, hey, let's talk about it some more. I think we could think about how we, what we draw upon to make that decision. In general, like say, if we're going to go with the advice of Chatham Health District, then that's what, you know, that's what we can reference as constituents continue to reach out and ask about the issue. So maybe that's something to talk about, but it's just a thought.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mark?
I completely agree with Peter. We're not experts on this issue. We all may have opinions based on the information that we receive, but we need a governing body that has the authority to make that. And we should tie it to somebody like Chatham Health. I think that's a great idea, Peter. If we want to keep discussing it, fine, but I think that's the best solution to this.
Yeah, I agree. The, we don't have the individual expertise and we're just one town among several, whereas Chatham Health has the whole bunch of towns around us, and that makes us all consistent.
So then I'm hearing that we want to add that as a discussion item tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Peter, Mark?
Yes, sir, I'm in agreement.
I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement too. I thought we kind of just had a discussion, so. If we need to formally have a discussion, then both.
That's my fault, Mark. I started to discuss it, which I shouldn't have done, so. I think adding it on, maybe there'll be a short discussion when it comes up later.
Okay, thanks, Peter.
And John?
Yeah, let's discuss.
Okay, great. So those will be the two items we'll add. Thank you, thank you, Ian.
We'll add those both under old business if that's okay with the board.
Yes, that makes perfect sense. Okay, our next section would be public comment.
Kevin Tula Mary has a public comment.
Okay.
Yes, hello. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity. And I was interested in the agenda item about the grant on the historic survey for African-American and Native American sites in Hebron. So I definitely think that, you know, my interest in the so-called Horton property and the protection of that as an asset to Hebron, environmental asset, historic asset, economic asset, I think is well-known by you guys. But I also, so the one thing about the history is that that property was owned by Henry Peters and his son Horace Peters, and they were the son and grandson of Caesar Peters. So that site has a significant role to play in that narrative and that understanding of Hebron and the histories of African-Americans and Native Americans. Of course, as you probably know, Hebron itself was a gift from Atawan hood, the son of the Mohegan Satchem Uncas. So I think there is an opportunity on that property and even renaming pretty soon of that property as the Peters property and not the Horton property would be a great way to get that clarification of information going out to the town and the town folks to let them know what is at stake with a industrial development on that site. Public Works is not the right building for that location. And then we get into the economic issues that Mr. Collins raised and that I think was reflected in that vote for the project at RAM. $9 million was the quote for the DPW garage from 2014. I'm sure that number has only gone up. And really, if you want clarification of that project, I think you need to talk about the $25 million that's included in the Town Hall, the Great Lawn, the Fire Department, and the Public Works. So that's a clarification that I think would be important for the people of Hebron to understand and I think would make, go a long way in the decision-making process as we move forward. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
The next public comment is from Joe O'Connor.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Joe O'Connor, 75 Smith Farm Road, Amston. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, although, you know, Tuesday's votes seem to be a very have a high turnout of voters. I'm sure everybody knows that I've been working on this RAM project for quite a long time. It's very disappointing to see that the RAM community has voted this down by such an overwhelming number of voters. I think a reason for that was the, there's been a lot, was a lot of misconceptions out there, some fake news being spread about studies that were not really entirely true. But overall, you know, it was, it was, you know, we sent letters out to get people involved. We've had two public forums, which no one attended. It's going to be interesting to see how you, as a board, now go back to the public with this municipality project and figure out how you're going to get that message out, as Mr. Casper's already referred to. I believe this project was, was a project that everyone, young and old, should have supported, regardless of your party. This project was about our children, their safety, fixing in a long overdue problem with the competition field and bringing the community together. Instead, this was the complete opposite. The students, teachers, and coaches feel that, feel that we let them down through no fault of their own. The students didn't have a voice. They were expecting adults, the adults to do what was right. And they didn't do that. The no vote signs that were sent out by our own Board of Selectmen, speaking, I guess, as an individual, Mr. Collins, was very upsetting to me to see that we're communities-minded people and we're not, we're not supporting the same things that's, that's the benefit of our community. We still have the same problem now. You know, I've been fighting this fight for over eight years as a, when I got on this board and before that. The message that's been sent to our community and to our school, RAM, is that our three towns don't support it. We had public officials from Andover and other towns writing letters not to support this project. I find that very disturbing as a member of Hebron who has always supported CIP, the budgets of Hebron, the budgets of our school, in moving our town forward. I don't think we did that here. We have lost an opportunity to have Friday Night Lights, which brings people together. It's a community builder. What does Hebron have to offer on Friday nights for all our taxpayers? Not much. I, I don't know what to say after this. I mean, we, we still have a problem with the field. It doesn't drain. We need a new track. Where are we going now? The board members are, it's a new board. We're going backwards in time. We've made great strides as RAM to try and fix problems from the past. And again, I'm just disappointed that we've, we sent the wrong message to our community. And I thank you for your time, and I hope that you guys, as a board, would also look and start talking and communicating with the other towns to figure out how we can support our children in our schools and have a unified message going forward. Because right now, I don't know where, you know, the teachers are wondering what's going to happen. And, you know, John, I'm, you know, it's really hard to sit there and look at you and say that we had, you had a lot of things going in our favor and then to put this false information out there. It really set, it sets our school systems back. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other?
Mr. Chairman, could I speak as a citizen?
Okay. We normally don't, as I say, we don't get into discussions, but.
I'm not getting into discussion. I just want to set the record straight. I had a position paper. It was presented to the Board of, the RAM Board of Education. It was based on science. It had all of the, all of the scientific papers. They had it. They didn't refute it, because it's what couldn't be refuted. And what it said, the latest paper in June in the Orthopedic Surgeons Journal said that artificial turf especially causes 60% more injuries for children. And subsequent to that, I mean, there are studies going back before that. Subsequent to that, I had all these people, physical therapists, people that work in doctor's office that have experience with this, telling me they're voting against it because they know it causes injuries. And the second part of it is that sports injuries leads to drug addiction in a lot of cases. A lot of bad things happen. So, you know, I'm going to work to get a natural grass field. I will, I will dedicate myself to that. But I will not be part of artificial turf, I'm sorry. And, and if I had anything to do with defeating that, although it was pretty much like five to one in Andover and two to one in the other two towns, if I had anything to do with it, thank you, you've made my day.
Okay, as I say, this is not a conflict resolution. You know, we are not getting into that, please. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Moving on to our good to know. Andy?
Once again, we don't have anybody for tonight's meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Next would be appointments and resignations. Excuse me. We have one appointment would be Ryan Price, Democrat, who has expressed interest in being appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm not sure if that individual is with us tonight, but I'll make the motion and we'll open it up for discussion. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Ryan Price to the Hebron Parks and Recreation Commission to a term to run until December 2023.
Chairman, I know Ryan. I know Ryan Price. You know, he's big in baseball. He's a very, he's, he's an active member of the community. I think he'd be a great choice.
Okay. Any other comment? Andy, yes, Andy?
Just that he did attend a Parks and Rec meeting. I did speak with the Chairman of that commission along with the new director. And they're promoting him to be appointed tonight.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter? John disappeared on me.
No, I'm here. John Collins, aye.
Mark?
Mark Reber, aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries. Thank you all. Our next would be the 2021 Boards and Commissions reappointments. This is in accordance with the board policy, the following list appointed, appointed terms expiring in December of 2021. Also included is the attendance record and the policy regarding reappointments. I guess the item will be continued on the November 18th agenda for actual reappointments based on responses received. So I'm assuming that at this point in time, we do not need to do anything?
No, it's just to give you an update, but we're preparing you for the next meeting when we do the appointments. I'll speak to it in the Town Manager's Report, but seeing it's an agenda item, we're having more than normal people not re-upping their appointments. So there's going to be a letter in the paper from myself as a town manager requesting people to, you know, step up and serve the community. But, so we're, we're going to have quite a few vacancies as of right now.
Okay, great. Okay, that's, I mean, that's not great news, but as long as we can handle it. Okay, next would be Town Manager's Report.
Mr. Chairman?
Just before, what's got to be recognized about that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we might think about doing our, we are Hebron thing. That got us volunteers since COVID's ending. Just a suggestion at some point.
Okay. But definitely, you know, definitely, definitely keep it in mind. Thank you. Okay, Andy?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the things that we've been working on in the Town Manager's Office is I met with, I'm going to be meeting with probate for the property of Mr. Yaps. That's a property off of Church Street that's down below. There is some discussion with some open space, along with us inheriting the house and the property. So that's, I met with the executor and we're waiting for probate to set up a meeting. So that's going as expected, and it's a very, very nice gift to the town. There'll be some more information about that as that moves forward. Very, very nice man. So as you know, we have a lot of new department heads, so that's taken up a lot of time. I've been meeting with them and going over the issues as they get their feet wet and move forward, especially the town planner and the Parks and Rec. And we're working on the budgets, CIPs do, and we're also working with the schools as well on those. So getting busy. The audit's almost done. We've also been busy with that, but that looks like it hopefully is going to come in on time this year without an extension. Keep your fingers crossed. Meeting on Maple Fest, that will be taking place this year after a two-year sabbatical. That will be the third Saturday in March. So once again, that'll showcase our center of town, pretty much like the Town Center Project did, which is a great, great turnout. Hopefully, the flower girl will be up and running in some capacity. That'll be a big boost. And we had a Teams meeting. Gail Richmond attended that along with a lot of other people that Sharon Gerard put together for our senior center and how we can better service our seniors with a multitude of different types of support. And that was a very well-run meeting with a lot of people. So I think that's going to gain some traction, and we're going to start meeting quarterly. But today was the first kickoff meeting, and that was very impressive. I'll leave that up to Gail to speak to that later during the report. Also had a meeting today with Willa Manic Waste. Our three-year contract for MSW and bulky is expiring. Willa Manic Waste has been sold, so I met with the new owners along with the old owners, myself and Kevin Kelly. So we're going to be negotiating new costs and get some budget numbers. So I don't have to tell you writings on the wall with what's going on in the climate, even in garbage. So costs are going to be going up, so that'll be a reflection in the budget this year. So as we renegotiate that contract, those costs will be going up. We're presently advertising for two new employees at the Public Works Department. That'll be closing shortly. We're going to move rapidly on that to try to get those positions filled, when there is upon us. And as I stated, we need to do like John recommended and anything we can to try to get new people to serve on these boards and commissions. This is the most we've, myself, when I say we, myself and Donna in the office have seen that people are not looking to re-up their positions. We're starting on the Affordable Housing Plan with the new town planner. He's set up the first two kickoff meetings. He's going to start organizing the group that he's going to be working with, along with a consultant. So the first meeting to start setting up would be either Tuesday or Wednesday, either 11:16 or 11:17. So we'll keep the board posted on that as that moves forward with a diverse group of people to represent the town of Hebron on that. Duplicate in there. So that's it for right now. That was it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, we get into our old business. We have the two, the two items that we discussed. I think the masks may be the quicker thing to do, since we've already had a lot of the discussion. And I'll ask Andy, you know, what Chatham Health's plans are, if they've discussed it or, you know, I think what's happening is people, people are looking for, they want to see some sort of closure or whatever, or least information as to what's going on. And I know different towns are even starting to do different things. So Andy, were you able to find out anything?
Yeah, so let me start off. The conversation was good earlier. We were just trying to add it to the agenda. So we could have this conversation and correct me if I'm wrong. I sent both your letter out to the Board of Selectmen along with the response from the Health Director suggesting that we, um, and the reasons why. And that's what's up on the screen here. And as a part of the packet, we made it a part of the packet because I thought you wanted to add this to the agenda.
Glad you did. Thank you.
So I, I can't see that from where I am. Um, and I didn't have that with me here out of the office. So if someone wants to read that response from Russ Melman, but it was a, a request originated by somebody in town saying it didn't really make sense to have to wear masks either in the town office or the library and then either go to Ted's or something simple and not have to wear one. But Russ kinda as the governing body of Hebron being the Board of Selectment, Russ kind of, as the Health Director, which we've always, at least even under executive order, I followed the lead of the Health Director. I said, I'm not an expert, Andy means I've always, uh, looked to him for guidance and he seemed to get us through pretty well up until now. So, um, there's a response from him that pretty much says that we should, at least for now, continue through, uh, you know, a couple more months and see where the rates are and and, uh, he lists the reasons why. So Donna, I know, are you willing to read that, Donna? Can you see it?
Yes, I can read it. So this is, um, a response from Russell Melmed. Regarding masks and the letters you received, the principal benefit of masks in reducing transmission is as source control, preventing the person wearing the mask from distributing their respiratory secretions widely in their surrounding environment when infected. Wearing a mask does provide some, but much less protection for the wearer. So please understand that the choice to wear a mask or not in public settings is a choice to protect those around you or not. Regarding confusion about where and when to wear a mask, CDC currently recommends that all persons wear masks in all indoor public settings in places with substantial community transmission. So while policies in different settings may be different, the recommendations of public health officials are that, are the same everywhere right now. But we do appear to be coming down from the Delta variant wave peak and both Hebron and Talon County rates have been bouncing up and down a bit between what CDC designates as, at substantial and moderate levels of community transmission. Whether that is because we have reached a level of population immunity from vaccination and natural infection that the virus has few places to go remains to be seen. We will know more in the few weeks after Thanksgiving. At that time, if we are not experiencing a surge in infections and especially hospitalizations, I may feel as confident as the resident who wrote this letter in the assertion of herd immunity. I understand that elected officials must balance the public health benefits of certain policies against their limitations on individual liberty and freedom. My recommendation is to continue requiring masks until we are confident there will not be another surge later this fall and winter. Because you may be exposed in the grocery store when there are many unmasked shoppers does not mean it is useless to prevent exposures in town hall. And that is Russell Melmed, Director of Health, Chatham Health District.
Thank you so much, Donna.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, yes, Peter.
I'm just thinking that the way I think about it, and again, I apologize for starting the discussion prematurely, but I would recommend that, um, we're clear that, and maybe it's a motion, I'm not sure, but we should, I recommend that we follow the directive, the recommendation, excuse me, of the Chatham Health District and Director, and we keep it on our agenda as old business. So it stays a relevant topic and it stays on the agenda for those that are interested and, and we keep the public, uh, you know, as we have. And I mean, Andy provides the information at the meeting, but maybe we can keep it on the agenda as old business, just so it stays sort of a, a highlighted item that that, uh, if that helps people feel that we're staying on top of it. But I mean, Andy does provide that every, every meeting, but I, I just recommend that we, that we follow that recommendation, the Chatham Health Director. We always have for other issues. And to be inconsistent now, I, I think would be, uh, irresponsible for the, you know, again, it's a hot topic, but it would show consistency with relying upon an expert, uh, as much as we have one locally to, uh, to provide our direct, uh, to provide a directive. So it's not up to us. It's up to us to make a decision as to who we should be listening to that has, uh, the public's best interest in mind. So that's the summary of how I'm thinking about it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mark.
Just like in our first discussion, I agree completely with Peter. So I have nothing else to say.
Okay.
I agree with, with Peter. He summed it up. We want to listen to the expert and take it meeting by meeting. So that we know what is happening. And as Russ's letter said, let's see what happens after Thanksgiving. That kind of, all those people meeting together, hopefully it will be fine, but we'll be prepared to deal if it's not, if there is an uptick. So right now, I wanna keep it the way it is.
Uh, John? You're on mute.
This, um, question, the, the school, the kids are still wearing masks at school?
Yes. Uh, yes, I think so.
So I, you know, I, I think, you know, I don't wanna be a hypocrite because I don't wear a mask in, in, uh, in stores generally, but, um, as long as the schools have masks, I think the, the buildings ought to have masks too, town buildings.
Okay.
So was that in a form of a motion? That do we need a second and a vote on that? Or is that just a discussion, Peter?
You're on mute.
I'm happy to make a motion if you think that's appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
Um, well, I, 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 I don't know if we need to have an emotion. Well, keep it on the agenda. You know what? Let's do it as a motion. That way it stays on the agenda, uh, and it stays, you know, fresh in people's minds.
Okay. So I'll take a crack at that and then by all means feel to make friendly amendments to it. So I, I make a motion that we follow the recommendation of the Chatham Health District or Director. I'm not sure how to, how to, how that should be listed. And relative to, um, masks being worn in public buildings and that, um, we keep the this issue of, as an agenda item on old business to provide current updates to the public.
Yes, Andy.
Could we amend that to town buildings? Cause it's not really public. It's the
That's great. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. You're right. That's what I meant and I didn't say it correctly. So thank you.
I second that.
Okay. All in, is that, okay. All in favor? John?
Aye. John Collins, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
And I will follow suit. Although I do, as I say, what are on the agenda? I think we need to, we need to try to get some, keep getting information. So, okay, thank you. Uh, the next that we put on the old business was the, uh, garage that John has requested. Um, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna ask Andy if he could just do a quick synopsis of what the next steps on this process are. Cause I think a lot of people don't fully understand. Yeah. Unlike when a commercial venture comes in, buys a piece of property, the different hoops that the town has to jump through. Uh, and so putting Andy on the spot, I apologize. Could you just kinda do a, a, a brief synopsis of what our next steps are?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And, and, and the, uh, the building, Public Building Committee is the lead, uh, committee on this. So when we brought this back up, there was a lot of comments, a lot of letters and statements that they felt weren't as accurate as some of the work that they did. So they're, they're clarifying the actions that were taken. There were some questions, uh, brought to the committee whether, uh, whether we're using the, the center of the land, if it could be moved closer to Keeney Road. Are we in the wetlands? Um, the shipo, the state historic preservation. So a lot of those things came up and what they're doing now is three things. They, they reached out to shipo. So shipo is going to do the historic, uh, evaluation of the property. That's, that's been, um, set up. So they're scheduled to do that. They reached out, the wetlands flagging was done. People don't realize that it was done and flagged, but it's been 10 years. So they wanna have it re-flagged with a certified soil scientist, re-flag it, the actual uh, area where the building and all the construction, if approved, would go. So that is in motion. And then thirdly, um, it was, what was my train of thought? So it was shipo. Oh, they reached out to Terry Han. So Terry Han was the original person contracted by the town, the landscape architect that did the design. And, um, there were some questions by Dave Solza whether we should move that more forward towards Keeney Road and preserve some of that land for future, uh, economic development. So she's defining the reasons under the request of the Public Building Committee. She's, uh, refining and giving a report on why they chose that property and why they chose the area on that property to put it there. There's three things that could change. If, if shipo, there's some sort of significance, we would have to move that. That would be one. If, if we were encroaching on the wetlands or something changed, that would be two. And then three, she's explaining why they made the decision to put it where they did and not closer to Keeney Road. So those three things are in motion right now. We should have those by the end of this month, hopefully, you know, holidays are in there. And then with that, the building committee is looking to do a presentation, videotape presentation and put that up there to answer all the questions why, where they started, where we are. And we also have asked, uh, Nathan L. Jacobson, our, um, consulting engineer to put a cost together to finalize final plans and what that would cost. The town will come back to the board for approval for, for funding to do that. So that's where the Public Building Committee is right now. When they proposed it, it is not encroaching in the wetlands. That was one of the reasons they put the building where they did on that parcel. There's issues with grades, cut and fills. That was, uh, one of the better areas. So, um, that's the update that I have. I'm not sure. I wasn't really prepared to do much more, but that's what is in the process right now. When that, all that information, data comes back, that'll go back to the Board of Selectmen and to the residents on where we are. And they'll add that to their, um, either their PowerPoint or their presentation.
Thank you. Um, and then the other things, of course, are gonna be, uh, as they, if, if they, if everything clears those hurdles, then there's also gonna be, you know, the building itself, what it's gonna contain. We had heard from the, the, and I wanna say it was Siemens, talking about, uh, some of the long-range plans on, on the government for clean, you know, clean energy, uh, trying to move away from fossil fuels, things like that. One of the things that Hebron is faced with is for the majority of our town, our power sources are single phase. If we are going to build a building, it needs to be able to, to meet some of the energy or all the energy requirements that may potentially be coming down the pipe, which is going to be three-phase. Uh, and sadly, very little bit of Hebron actually has three-phase. So this was something else that I was hoping that the building committee would, would kind of address to verify if it were to go in a non-three-phase power system area, what would that cost look like? You know, so there, there's still a number of moving parts. In my estimation or in my, my belief, before it really gets to the voters. This grant that we're gonna be proposing, uh, tonight, or, uh, may also shed new light on it. And so that's why this, you know, one of the reasons why this is happening first off, but also, you know, nothing is said and done. Um, you know, everybody's like, oh, this is it. It's, it's, you know, there are still moving parts.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Maybe Andy can help me on it. Cause you hadn't mentioned, Andy, maybe if we, uh, as a town, maybe weren't ready, there would maybe be a chance that there would be discussion or decisions around maybe not having it on, in a referendum, uh, as we had originally agreed to. So my question procedurally is, based on this continuing, uh, development of information as we move forward over the months ahead, whose decision would it be not to have it, uh, brought forth to the public as we has, as, as we have originally agreed to have done? I know it was a majority vote. Not everyone agreed, but um, whose decision would that be? Yours, uh, or the building committees? Or would the Board of Selectmen be voting on some making changes?
Thank you. Casper. So the Board of Selectmen are in charge of everything that goes to referendum. All I do is I work for the Board of Selectmen. The building committee is a quasi-association underneath your reign, so to speak. So I would prepare it and put it on a Board of Selectmen agenda with the information we will be looking to move forward. But everything would have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Andy. It's on me. Sure. Understood. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, so, you know, I appreciate John Barron coming forward with, uh, information about African-American history. And I appreciate, uh, Tula Mary's coming forward about the wetland function and value. And I just wanna say, you know, like, uh, my objection to the building committee was I never thought that they had the expertise for a site selection, a site selection committee. I, I don't think they have, but okay, they have a report and they gave us the damn report and it was selected, this was selected by them. And so you're going forward with this referendum and this is the place you wanna have it. Um, I don't think there was ever a charge for us to allow the building committee to coordinate the actual, um, building of this thing or the, the, uh, the evaluation of, of the environmental evaluation or the transportation or the, the history of it. And again, the building committee is good for inside buildings, for building a building, but this is a whole different business. I mean, I, I I was in a part of this business. I, I know that there are, there's much more expertise out there. So I'm very concerned about that, you know, that, that it's kind of, again, you know, a little bit over here, well, somebody has concerns over here instead of the at the entire site, you know, economic benefits, all that sort of stuff. Okay. That's number one. Number two, I don't think it's gonna pass. And so any money that we're spending right now, I think is a waste of time and waste of money. So I think we should think about how much money we are getting this, this Ms. Han. I, I seem to remember her writing something like nine years ago or something. Um, she was part of one of the engineering firms. Um, and getting a soil scientist out there. Again, you're getting a soil scientist out there to do jurisdictional delineation. That's not all that you do as a soil scientist. You know, that's not even the most important part of this. Most important part of this is a function and value evaluation. But again, the, the building committee would not know anything about that. So, um, I have grave concerns again, and, you know, we're gonna go down this path that the RAM board went down. And you're gonna have this referendum in May and we're gonna have spent all of this money on consultants and it's not gonna pass. In fact, it's gonna go down in flames. So I, I would, I would just again, back up. And, and the second, the third thing is, you know, we have all this concern about the safety of the, of the people at the, at the DPW facility right now. I hope that we're dedicating some resources to fixing up that place. So that there are no safety concerns right now. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, just one more thing. I just was thinking about this. I don't know that it's a good idea. Maybe we don't wanna take up too much time on this, but I was listening to Joe's comments and obviously John's comments and, um, you know, the two different projects and the idea that these things can fail. But what we have is an underlying need to, to John's point with the safety, to address issues that aren't going away. So we can march out and vote 90% to 10% that I don't want this or that. The field at RAM is still a problem. Joe's articulated that. It needs to be repaired. That's a safety issue and it's, and it's a mess. Okay. That's a problem that is not gonna go away. The DPW, that's a problem that's not going away. Okay. So the idea that we spend all this time and money to just So the idea that we spend all this time and money to just fail and then now another year goes by, would there be any value? And this is the part where I don't know if it's a good idea. Would there be any value to a town survey? And at least recognize that, listen, these are problems that need to be fixed. So this isn't a luxury. We have to fix it in some way. And, you know, we're, we're trying to gauge where the support is because maybe, maybe there's a different way. And we can think differently about how we approach some of these big issues because Joe's frustration is this has been a problem at the school for forever or eight years or so, and he's right. And now it's not fixed and it's, that's a problem. And John's comment about we have, we have in town employees that are clearly they're in an area that is not safe. And we can't wait a year and then another year to address it. So I don't know if that's something that maybe we can better gauge where the taxpayers are thinking about what they're willing to do. And so that was just an idea. So maybe it's something we can toss on for next week, next meeting's agenda to sort of think about how we can gather information to allow us to be better informed as to nothing worth and putting, nothing is worth in putting some worse than putting something forward that we know is going to fail. I mean, that's really frustrating for everybody. And so we want something to pass that makes everybody feel like we're moving in the right direction. So that was just an idea and a thought in general on these sort of two issues that need, and again, the RAM issue is not our issue to solve, but it's just the public, maybe we can gather some information from the public to better inform us as to what they would support. Again, I don't have anything more than just that as an idea that I've put out there maybe for future discussion. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. And as I say, my take on it is I want to hear what these answers come in as or come in at before we make any definitive plans. You know, as I say, in the private world, they would just buy it. They'd get somebody to build it, make it fit within whatever they needed. And they just do it. But in the world of our world here, it's it's different. You know, you don't have a company that just buys a piece of property and they're throwing a building on it and they make it work. We don't have that luxury. So I think it's great that we're doing these added studies. And I'll be very, very interested to see what those answers come back as. And once that happens, we we all may change our opinions. But until we have those answers, I think we would be remiss in our responsibilities to to make decisions one way or another. We've got to get these answers and that's why I'm hoping that everything moves forward and that we will have those answers. Yeah. See what time.
Mr. Chairman, it's now like I'd like to make a comment as a representative from the public building committee.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yes, please.
Okay. Number one, I do want to address the comment of land selection. We continue to hear that people on the public building committee have no expertise on selecting land, and that's accurate. The land was not selected in a vacuum. The land was selected by professionals and the recommendation of those professionals was made to the selectmen by the building committee. And the other, the only other thing I would like to say is that the public building committee is of the opinion right now that in order to do this right, we need to provide information. We need to provide all information. At our last meeting, we discussed doing a, just what Peter suggested, doing a a poll online to try to gather information from people. We also need to have multiple, yes, as Andy said, we're going to do a presentation, but we have to have multiple times when we have public hearings so the community can be be heard. We believe that May is way too aggressive in order to do those right. We would rather see that the timeframe be pushed out so that we can get all the input and we can get out all the information. And we can make the adjustments that are needed to be made prior to putting it out to referendum. So that's my comment, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, just a comment. So I just want to make a delineation between what the board of selectmen does and what planning and zoning does. You know, planning zoning will zone this, whatever it does in the 2024 comprehensive plan, right? So the zoning on the Horton property, they may have a commercial, they may, you know, they'll have their plan. But we bought that land. We're the owners of that land. So we're like the owners. We have to comply with them, but we can have our own plans, right? And it seems to me that if you want consensus, you might want to get a committee together of citizens to look at the beneficial uses of of that land for the best interests of the future of Hebron. And have them come out. And if they say, you know, the DPW is essential, it's a perfect thing for this. Well, it'll pass. You know, you've got your citizens, you've got, you've got people that have looked at it in detail. You've got the neighbors, you've got economists, you've got environmentalists, you've got, you know, whoever, maybe some school people. I mean, you will, you will get consensus. What the school board did, you know, and Ram didn't do was get consensus. They just thought it was going to get passed. They didn't realize that that there were some, you know, some people out there that didn't like it. I would, I would encourage that the board of selectmen get a broad you know, broad array of citizens with different skills, economists, business development, neighbors, you know, environmentalists, you know, whatever, transportation specialists, they're all out there. We, there are people out there that in this town that will do it. Because this is like so important to the future of the town, all of us. And I just and the second thing is, like I said with with Peter, yeah, we should, there should be a short term funding for the existing DPW facility. Make sure that it's safe. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you. Moving on. Is there any other old business that we need to discuss? I don't believe there are at this point, any new business, which would be the Connecticut State Historic Preservation Office Historic Preservation Enhancement Grant. Wow.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, please.
So I just, for clarification, there's, there's two applications. This one is a grant that's been worked on for a while. It was with the historic properties. And it kind of hung around there for a little while. So we kind of took it back and then we were in between planners. So Patrick is on here with us tonight. But the clarification I want to make is this is a grant that we're applying for to look at all of Hebron to study all of Hebron. So we don't have any surprises. And this is something we've been working on for a couple of months, if not more. And this would work with ship oh, and it would be a grant to do just that. And we didn't want to wait. The clarification is we didn't want to wait for the Horton property as Mr. Tom Mary Tom Mary stated earlier. So we went ahead because that, anything like that would change exactly what's being proposed. So we went ahead as directed by the board of selectmen to move forward with the project to see if it's feasible and try to get it to get it to referendum. That was the directive given by the board of selectmen. So one, the three things we felt were important and the only thing that matters in this agenda item is that we initiated that with ship oh specifically for the Horton property. So this is going to cover the whole town. This is something that was before that. And we finally got it finalized thanks to Patrick and I'll turn it over to him in a second. But I wanted to make sure because under public comment, there was a question and I wanted to clarify what the two two are. He commented to this item on the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Patrick?
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the introduction, Andy. As Andy had mentioned, this is a grant application to do a townwide inventory of historic sites associated with early African and indigenous populations in Hebron. And these are two groups where there's not a lot known about the the people themselves, as well as the sites and structures associated with them. And so by doing the townwide inventory, we're really taking that first step to document where these sites and structures are located, which will be the first step towards taking proactive action as we go forth with future open space acquisitions, improvements to town facilities. This will also be very valuable for the Planning and Zoning Commission as they update their plan of conservation and development over the coming years. And so in your packet this evening, we have two proposed resolutions or one proposed resolution with two components. The first is to approve the application, which is to the state Historic Preservation Office in the amount of $20,000 for this historic resource inventory. And the second part being to authorize Andy as the town manager to execute that contract should we receive it from the, from the state Historic Preservation Office.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'll read the resolution and we'll open it for discussion. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the Historic Preservation Enhancement Grant Application offered through the state of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development State Historic Preservation Office in the amount of $20,000 for the Historic Resource Inventory Project. And be it further resolved that Andrew J. Tierney, who is the town manager of the Town of Hebron, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of the Town of Hebron, a certain contract with the state of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development and to affix the corporate seal if any. So again, opening it up for discussion. Any discussion? Any discussion? Yes.
Is John, John, I didn't want to say John Baron is a tremendous resource. When I was doing the Committee on Racial Justice and Equity, I found his quotes and him helping people on the history of of Hebron going back to 1975. So I hope he's involved in this. And I just want to make, Patrick, you probably knows already that he's a tremendous resource here.
Actually, John, thanks for bringing that up. I would like to thank John as well as members of the Historic Society and the Historic Properties Commission for did a lot of the legwork and a lot of the background research that went into this grant. So thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to echo that. I've been working with John Baron from the onset with the actual sidewalk project, this grant Horton property. I'm in constant contact with him weekly. So we are, we are utilizing his expertise. I think he sent a letter to everybody this week, I think yesterday or today. I don't know if everybody got it, but quite long, but very accurate.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Gail?
Gail Wismann, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Our next will be the November 18th draft agenda. And let's sure if there's any changes or additions or whatever, but yes.
I'd like to, well, speaking, I guess on behalf of John because he had brought it up, I'd like to add to the agenda sort of session on how we can problem solve these, this significant open positions on boards and commissions and how we might address that or at least support that closing that gap. So could we add that to the agenda?
Sure.
John had brought it up, but I mean, I think it should be on the agenda.
Yeah, I have no problem at all. That's fine. You know, I think we're going to find as we discuss and as we get into it, every entity in town, both private and public, are having the exact same problems. The Lions Club, the Fire Department. You name an organization, they're not getting the the resources, the help that they need to function.
We're not going to solve this clearly, but the idea is I want the public to see that it's it's important to us. We need to hear from new members. We need to hear from the public. We need people to engage. There's some great people out there who aren't stepping forward and and probably with, you know, we just, I think we just need to be visible on the issue. I don't, I don't have any sort of predisposed position that we're going to solve it. But we clearly, I just want to publicly put it as an issue that that we're concerned about and maybe that if one or two more people come up with John's idea, you know, we are Hebron and maybe we do a couple of things like that. If we get two or three more good people, then then awesome. And so that's all. I mean, I don't have solutions. And you're right, it's a problem. Everywhere, you know, we can get people to deliver pizzas or make my salads and all that at the restaurants. That's a problem.
As many of you know, in my position as president of ACLB, I go around the state to many towns much smaller than us and much larger. And the lack of volunteers is all over. And and in many, many different types of boards, it doesn't limit itself. So what we need need to do, I think, when we discuss it is how do we present it as a charming youthful thing for you to do with your time when you get home from work? Because these towns all they all run on with our efforts. So and I have a few thoughts about that, which I'll bring up next time as we're putting it on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Since I, Mr. Chairman, since I'll be here next time, I'll just give you my take on We Are Hebron. You know, one of the recommendations of Weber, first of all, We Are Hebron was a tremendous success. Everybody loved it, blah, blah, blah. And we got a number of volunteers out of it and a number of people running for office, which is great, too. The, one of the recommendations of the Racial Justice and Equity Commission was to enlarge We Are Hebron to include ambassador, become ambassadors for Hebron. I would just, I would just you know, hope that that might be a possibility. One of the things that an pastor would do would be greet every new resident that comes to him and let them know that they are basically, you know, their their coach or whatever. And possibly even take them around to 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 introduce them to you know, the board of selectmen, please, whatever. I think that would be a tremendous benefit to the, actually, both economically, but also just socially and perhaps the volunteers that way.
I agree. Thank you. Okay. Our next item would be the consent agenda. And these items are be considered routine in nature, which the board may or may not need to discuss individually and maybe voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. And basically, we have the approval of the October 21st, 2021 regular meeting. And there's only one tax refund, I guess. So anybody wish to remove that item or either one? If not, call for a motion to approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2021 regular meeting and the tax refund as listed. All in favor? John?
John Collins, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Gail?
Gail Wismann, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next would be our latest reports. Mark?
A little update about RAM. The head of the superintendent search committee had to step down due to health reasons. And a new person was appointed and that's coming up in the next couple of months. So you're gonna have to scramble a little bit. So that's probably one of the most important tents that are going to be taking place with the board. And there was some discussion about whether the RAM board should just without any input necessarily or any vote from anybody else do it themselves? Or should the community and faculty be involved? Or should the community and faculty be involved? So it seems to be a little heated in this discussion at this point and unresolved. Other than that. So the, the, the kids are expressing themselves having been out for so long and. It, it is, it's kind of challenging over for the faculty and. The school resource officers because Tom Reagan and I are sharing it now. This, it's, it's kind of inexplicable. I haven't quite seen. So many cases of bad behavior, I think, in my four years there. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Gail?
All right. The first one is the Commission on Aging, the Senior Center. The winter heating assistance program is open and accepting applications. Anyone who feels that needs more information should contact the Senior Center. There's no more grab and go meals. The lunches are now congregate and that seems to be making a lot of people happy as they can get to socialize. Retribution Appreciation Day is Wednesday, November 10. And as Andy mentioned, the first multidisciplinary team meeting was today. It was absolutely wonderful. I had become acquainted with that about. Pre-pandemic time when I went with Sharon to a meeting. And I'm very happy to see that we will be starting it here in town. It will not only. Include. Agencies in town, but also in the areas. It's the northeast area of aging, Department of Social Services. And the idea to sum up is that someone, a senior in need of services. Will not fall through the cracks that there will be someone. That they will talk to and that person will be able to reach out to others to get them the services needed. So this is going to be a real wonderful boost to the seniors in our town. The Douglas Library, the Friday movies are ongoing. Tomorrow will be The Green Knight. Next week will be Black Widow. And they're at one o'clock in the community room at the library. And the next Friends Book Sale was scheduled for Saturday, November 20th. And I hope you all come and say hello to me. The Hebron Board of Ed, next meeting is, is next Thursday and they will be starting with two new members. So. The big welcome will be given to them, I'm sure. And that's it.
Thank you. Peter?
Nothing from the Board of Finance. We should be able to debate on that. The Parks and Rec Commission meeting. And they, the commission does feel the, they should have the option of meeting in person if they can maintain some reasonable distance. I understand our position, but. I wanted to put that forward as something that they expressed. To me, the, there was quite a bit of discussion on the, in another presentation. By the RAM Skateboard Club on addressing the skate park. And its current condition and sort of a next step on that. So there was quite a bit of discussion surrounding that. From a, again, from a small group of passionate skate club members from RAM. And then some discussion on some possible costs and additional information around that. Possibly building a pickleball court and the costs around that. So discussions around that. So that I found interesting. It definitely is. An eyesore that needs to be addressed. So continue to be interested in, in that, that discussion. And ultimately, obviously, running through Andy and. And there's a normal process, but good dialogue around that. And then some initial budget discussions and quite a bit of an update on the, on the program. Still, still some challenges. Some of the programs getting the attendance that. That they need, but, you know, good people doing some good work there. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. John?
I got nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Andy, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, it was easier for me for the Board of Selectmen as I promised. I sent out an update on the sewer. Upgrades by email. That'll be in the town manager's. Report that goes out tomorrow, hopefully, so the residents can see it as well. But moving forward on that project. And then it wasn't mentioned earlier, but on another subject, we have the swearing and ceremony. It's November 16th, I believe. Right, Donna? And is that at seven o'clock or?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
That's why I'm asking, is it the 18th, Donna?
It's Tuesday, the 16th. At the Old Town Hall at 7:00 PM.
In person.
In person.
Thank you, Donna.
So Andy, have a question about the sewers?
I was positive.
Okay, I don't know if I'm prepared to answer, but go ahead.
I saw a $13,000 change order. Is that, is that normal?
I haven't looked at it yet, John. I came in later this afternoon and I had that meeting at Willimantic Way. So I'll, I'll study that tomorrow. And see what that is. I, I wanted to get it out for today's meeting, but I had other meetings scheduled, so I, I didn't read it in its entirety.
Okay.
I know, and I, I don't want to guess. That's why I, I can get that information and send it to you when I, when I find out what it is. But I know they had to. Move something and get an easement. So I don't know if that had something to do with that, but I'll find out.
You, you don't have to send it to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I, the only thing I've got is with the Fire Department. Again, the, the Fire Department, the auxiliary will be doing the modified Thanksgiving dinner for the seniors. And the, what that is, is that they will be providing meals and delivering them. So those seniors who are interested, please call Sharon at the Senior Center and sign up. Just so that they know how many meals they need to do. Last year, I guess they did roughly 80 meals. So we're assuming that this year will be roughly the same. And again, they'll be delivered that, that Sunday. Other than that, I, that's all I've got. I, I will say the Fire Department. The other day was actually very, very busy. Probably one of the busiest non-hurricane or, or storm days they had. They had 18 calls in one day. You know, so. And it ranged from everywhere in town. So it's, you know, their workload is not lightening up. And the problem is, is there's really only a handful of members who are really, you know, active. So. You know, back from when I was fire chief, you know, where I had 125 members, they're a fraction of that now. So. You know, it goes back to this volunteering issue and. All entities townwide. Have these types of issues. So it's good that we're going to be discussing it. I think other than that, I've got nothing. So. Open it back up for public comment. Donna, any public comment?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay. With that, then I'll ask for. Gail?
It is 8:18 and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Okay, so it'll be it. Thank you all very much. Have a safe, happy weekend.